It's seven o'clock. The March eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Lisbon City Council now come to order. We'll call Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devin. We will open with a regular session for the Order of Business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda printed?
Absolutely.
There a second? We'll call both Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devin. Agenda has been approved as printed. The deputy is not here, so we'll hold back and forth. Please review a minutes of the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting. And after reviewing, you have any edits? Please bring those to the floor.
Four, February afternoon, the same January eighth, four twenty-four, September twenty-five. Just in time.
Just one more.
Absolutely.
Much motion approved.
Is there a second to motion? We'll call both Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devin. Ministers of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting have been approved. Please review the financial report of February. After reviewing, please ask any questions. And then we will entertain a motion and a second to approve the financial report.
Tell me if you want any details. We're going to start.
I'd like to approve the funds.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call both Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devin. Financial report for February has been approved as printed. The bills are listed on this sheet. You can see there's a paper as well as four. We have one eleven to be approved. And you said that's the total of all the bills that's in hand. The last dumpster you took was the twenty-fifth. I mean, that's all here.
Yeah, it's all. Ten loads.
I think that's ten, twenty-two. So just settling. Yep. Is the lamp bill bill, is that the tire?
Yeah.
Now, Darrell got some guys from the half day house to come clean out the house. They do daily work, so.
There's several of those.
There's three of those.
Casey, Avery, Cody, Bridle, Seamus, K.
Bridle's getting a little bit.
Yeah. So much more. So we had that extra coverage for the tractor, right?
Yeah.
What's the periodic examination?
Every several years, we have to have an audit. And so the state collects money every year. And then whoever they hired to do the audit, then that's what they pay them with.
And we've just paid out once a year? Once every eight years?
No, we get it once a year. And it went up to a hundred and fifty dollars just to. And for five hundred dollars for many years.
Many things goes on there too, don't they?
Yeah, I did that. Yeah, because that's all they have. Yeah. And cancel that. And some of that.
I'd like a motion to amend the bills.
Is there a second? Second, we'll call both Craig, Ted, Mike, Pam, Devin. Bills have been approved as printed. Do we have any residents concerned?
Nobody else? Uh, two things. Hang time, three oh eight State Street. Uh, I would like the council not to forget about that CPR machine. I know J R isn't here, the perfect sponsors aren't here. Uh, just by the way, we're reminded that we're basically out here on our own. Uh, and if you've never had the opportunity to do CPR, uh, I encourage you to take the class and give it a shot to find out just how damn physically taxing that is. And that machine is, uh, could, uh, could save lives. Okay? Uh, so I, I'm afraid we're gonna drop that. I, I would like us to, you know, just to remember that. Uh, the other topic is, uh, that one eleven to be approved. Uh, I would be interested as well as I think some of my neighbors, uh, to, uh, to know just how much money the city spent on one eleven to be approved. Do you have a total? I mean, I'm, I'm not asking right now, but.
Well, we added, we can answer part of that. We added, we added, we added the cleanup bill. Now, that, that did not include the attorney.
Seven years of attorney.
No, that part we don't know, but.
Are you sure you don't know?
We started.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We just added up. What did you come up with?
Twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars for what is?
Less.
For rest month.
For this month.
Which is, oh, that's not. That's, uh, ten, ten dumpsters.
Yeah.
Roll offs. I mean, well, you saw what it looked like, so.
Perfect.
Just an estimate there, that's all.
Yeah, that was just, yeah. That was just a rough number, I mean.
I, I, honestly, I, I would be interested in, if we could throw some. You know, because, well, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other residents concerned with the motion for the bills?
Justin Love, two oh one State Street. I, uh, I'm just curious to see where we go with, uh, the talk between Albein and his code officer. But I'm gonna not really comment on it until I see, uh, whether that might take. But, uh, I just wanna say that I live out here because I like this town, the way it is. Can't be better than that, but, you know. Could be worse too. I just hate to see it being that way, but obviously with that, thanks.
Thank you, Justin. Any other? Darrell, no further residents concerned, we'll move into full business. Are there any new submissions that need to be brought before our time? Is there any, anything done regarding? Do you know anything for the attorney regarding Devin and Sheldon's situation?
Send him a notice. Um, if they don't clean up, then they can come in now. You say you could come with that and know it tomorrow. Or they're really not allowed to stay in that, I believe, yes?
But we couldn't go into the apps, I mean, correct?
No.
It's just the app. If there's a market, you check something.
Go ahead.
Jerks.
Are there any other, Christian, were there any other concerns to be brought up?
I am. Well, not on the street, but in that area, so.
Any others? All right, uh, number two, discussion on the action on one oh nine, one eleven, the Duke Street. I'd like to thank all those who were involved with the property cleanup. Ted and Darrell and Lance, and I know there were others. Like to thank the past council members and especially Mayor Tanner for working on this project for how many years?
A long time.
A long time. So, um, there is a very strict procedure. If the council decides to move forward, word with something, the property is all outlined in a handout. But before we do that, I'd like to appoint the Streets and Allies Committee to work on a proposed action plan toward this, um, project, something that they might bring back to us, um, in order that we might discuss it and think about it and see what might happen, just a proposed action plan.
Yeah, we just need to start somewhere.
Correct. And, um.
On what to do with that property is.
Right. As far as.
It's just streets and hours, but.
So, um, there's a lot of formal steps according to section three sixty-four point seven of the Iowa Code, which need to be followed very closely. So, um, let's open it up to the council for some discussion on how, how you think this committee might move forward with some type of action plan.
What code do you mean, all that stuff?
Uh, code three sixty-four point seven.
Personally, I'm excited if you're interested in selling it or not. Because that's where this could fall into justice. And then you come, if you want to, then you contact the attorney, who she tells us what to do. Mayor, I think that it's done properly, and I don't have the right mind reach to come up with the resolutions about that.
There's a formal resolution process. And there's a, um, publish, a notice of public hearing. And then after the public hearing, there's a second resolution as well as some other steps.
If we was up.
Correct.
What would be the point of not selling it?
That's, that's, we need to get that from the tax bill.
No, I agree, no, I agree.
Both lots, my opinion, both lots is one.
Yeah.
So both of them.
I guess.
They both got water to them. Now, we have to build back on that watch.
That's what you have to put on your, uh, if you do steel bids, you have to actually put what they need to do.
They've got notice, market, town has the property sale, and they got bill on it.
Yep. And you can tell them, from what I've worked at Marshall Towns, you can tell them, like, uh, stick built, manufactured, how many square feet.
Is that by their code, though? How much of that is your code requirements where we don't have to?
I see, I don't know what our ordinance is to us.
We don't have any code that stipulates it now.
I would think as a whole, it's only a silver, right?
Well, I think you make sure the maker hasn't got your property out yet. You want to get that income coming in to try to, well, you're never gonna be good at that, but. You know, you wanna get some tax, some tax number for your property.
Well, when you start to build something, you're gonna get taxed.
Well, but you have to tell them they have to build something.
Well, that's why it's gonna have to be.
But we didn't get into this to make our money back, right? We got into it to take care of.
And, and get a new family in town.
Well, yeah, that's the ideal for sure.
Yes.
Think you're gonna have a harder time getting a silver, and you tell somebody exactly what you have to do to it.
All you have to do is a minimum.
Yeah. A what?
A minimum. Like, um, I, I've looked at other towns and they have like fourteen hundred square foot, single-family residential. God, they need four hundred, fourteen hundred foot is very good.
So that's something that would match with you, huh?
Well, that's what you've got, but, no, what a house would be.
Yeah.
But that's what, I mean, that's what you gotta think about. What do you want, you know, what do you wanna do?
Well, it's gonna have to figure it out. What we don't have, where we want to build or what it be. You got a hundred, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah.
Well, you can put new blocks on them.
Little junkyard.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking of if you've got a new block is you have enough money here for parking, and offspring parking, and side cars, and that kind of thing.
We can do it on our own.
Well, you can't. I mean, if you, if you let them know what they can do, then you're okay.
That would be a good question for the attorney, before you get too far down that road, since we do not have any code. Because we do not have a little bit.
No.
So that's a. A question for the attorney is, can we specify what can go or the minimum, what needs to be put on there?
Yep.
Since we don't have a code.
And what I'm looking at right here does not, does not reference any kind of code. Well, that's.
Now, we got any kind of bill code.
I would say it includes, correct?
Correct.
We of the town probably can stipulate whether there's that on it or what we, before we sell the property. But probably need to go through the attorney to find that. You know, we can stipulate that you're gonna have to build such and such on this property if you buy it.
And, and usually they say within two years.
It's nothing.
Of the attorney will know.
Yeah.
And then the tax payment coming by that.
Yeah.
So not to be here too far, but if we're gonna do a batch, we feel the one, the shirt piece would be on, right? Because there's no reason to hold on that one here.
That's a good question, very good. Now, there's an issue with that because we have to dig in water, correct?
We have to put a water line in.
We have to do it, we can't sell it as is?
No, the water line will, cold or not hot, we go through all of that property.
So we have to do that?
We have to put a water line in that house.
Okay.
That property.
So. Is there a reason how to do that? Get that one going?
We've talked about doing that.
Yeah.
Sometime.
How difficult will that be?
Finding is like you do it. We try.
Got more.
I'd prefer to go or sell everywhere.
Oh, oh.
At our time, I think somebody did.
Shunting is not.
Return my.
We don't worry. Then you got, you got your fire, and you're gonna find a new district.
So this could be very expensive.
Yeah. Do a morgue, I think, is better.
So how many guys around here have morgue machines, for lack of a better term?
Andrews one, two.
Oh, Cam's boss?
Yeah.
So is that something you go ahead and approach, or, I mean, I just wonder, like, you wanna get tax money off this one? If you're like going through the whole process, 'cause you want somebody to build over there. You do the same thing over there. I mean, I'm not totally for that at the moment, just being honest, but I wonder if that's, if you're dealing with it all at once.
Is that a sixty by hundred twenty lot, or it's smaller, is that?
Longer one way and smaller this way. We did survey.
Okay.
We have surveyed. We didn't have one.
So that's not something you can just sell as it's a town, it's not there.
I don't think so, because there's some that are not set, so it's a venture, but it might just be a little wide.
Was that flying an easement back in the day, or was, well, we didn't want the church.
Parks.
It'd be a church park.
Okay.
Okay, they're running around the back church. Over there.
All right, Pam and, uh, Snowball, do you guys wanna work with Christie regarding the attorney and move, move forward with some ideas with the attorney and see what the attorney says?
See what the attorney got, said, and go from there.
Correct. And then, uh, bring a plan back to April.
If there's any, if there's anything to do that.
Were you the one?
You were the, so you all.
There's thirty five.
All right, so if you all will, um, work with Christie, Christie will work with the attorney, and we'll bring back a plan, uh, somewhat of a proposed, rough plan for, uh, April. Uh, Christie, discussion at twenty twenty-five minutes.
Okay, we have several cases to deal with. First, we'll look at. I think we've got two sheets that look, one is the front cover of the budget. Um, this says how much it is for a thousand different, um, different lines of tax dollars. We used to have an emergency. Last year's legislature changed this a lot, so it only affected us on, if you use emergency. Whatever you're not, we didn't use it last year, but it did, so it actually changed. I could not ask for the most lucky amount that we could on just the regular properties. That's the midline, if you've had it in our numbers. The very first line on here, that's at seventy dollars. But it does give us the possibility of doing a, um, insurance, which is the next column, row that has the number in it, and has twenty. row that has the number in it, and has twenty thousand five hundred dollars in it. Insurance is particularly increased. I've got this year's numbers, but I'm assuming next year's, been told this year's is going up twenty five percent at least, and then next year's, it's not going to go up as much, but that's what they don't make for this year. So, there's ag lands. That's just other property values. And then halfway through the page is FICA, waivers. We can also levy for an amount to help pay those, the city's portion. No, it's not the employees' portion, it's just the city's portion. So that's in there. So then we can compare, this reminds me of the version to that. Kind of just back and forth on. Down at the bottom, my bottom half is just to compare the levies, assessed amounts for as regular NA with the levies that we have charged over the years. As you can see, our assessed values have gone up quite a bit in the last eight years, doubled. Some of that though is from the co-op. They finally, after the tax payment, everything that they put in now is taxable. So a lot of that increases from the co-op, so that's nice. And then just the different amounts we've gotten or given from the different taxes amounts that we can have. And it has increased, there's another title in here, it should be, the next to last column should be twenty four, not twenty three. If I was smarter, then it's Excel and not, it would be easier to move stuff over.
Wait, is it twenty four, twenty five?
The last one's twenty five, the one before it should be.
That says twenty twenty two twice.
Right. But maybe we had to move all those over a list, I missed that one. So based on our taxable valuations going up, we have got more. An emergency management.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, we can't do that anymore. Then there's this fund, what's called fund balance sheet. At the top is what we did actually fiscal ending last year in June thirtieth. The next one is estimated, the next year's is our, what I'm estimating this year is going to end up at, you know, it's kind of a shot in the dark. I put in what I know, but I'm looking at it's a shot in the dark. And so then the bottom here is with the budget that I've worked out, what those front numbers would be. It's just kind of interesting where it goes. Permanent fund, that's the cemetery funds that we can't touch. So cemetery funds.
Where's that?
No, it's a lot of this.
One fourth of all from the end.
That cemetery fund, but yeah.
So tell me, special revenues.
I'll get to that.
Okay.
Okay. So the budget for the state is divided into, the only, we use four of the options. General, that covers several items, we'll go for that. Special revenue is permanent, and then proprietary, that's the water and sewer. So on this sheet, I have at the top, I have general, and then all of the funds that's on your clerk's report, that's included in that general one. Except I forgot building. I did this at home, so. So general is basically everything that's not water, sewer, and cemetery. And road use tax. That's in special revenues. So special revenues is the road use tax. And the employee benefits, diapers and that. FICA withholding. Is special revenues. And general is everything else. Liberty and less than local option sales tax, those are fire, first responders, reserves accounts, parks, cemetery, services fund. There is a cemetery fund, where you don't need to land, you can use it the cemetery, the sirens generate or purchase. I have condensed eleven pages in the, on the sheet, not in the back, because there's lots of lines that we don't use up here. It gets overwhelming. Do you want to look at it? My only means look at it. I have our income listed at the top. We have from taxes, licenses and permits, that is the liquor license and the cigarette or tobacco permits. For the price of street rentals and interest, rental fee on here. Interest we get on any of the accounts. We also get rental from the city, almost a lot that the post office brings on. So we get funds from the post office in your month for that. Road use tax, that comes from the state, from your.
Gasoline.
Gasoline, some of it's your, the fees you pay for your tags. Local option sales tax, that's extra one percent that you're paying when you buy stuff in town. Townships, we get funds from less gun banger. We get a little bit out of Felix, the Felix and Prendy for first responders, it's like thirty four bucks or something a year. Not sure they can buy anything for thirty four dollars. We don't, that's the only two that contribute to. Here, so that is, that goes towards what the first responders, fire department, part of their budget. Misaline is, a lot of that is the liberty and less gun funds goes under the misaline's income. And the charges for services, you got water and messero fees. Any questions on that? Expenses, for the expenses, they, they break it down by, I don't know, what do you call it? Categories. Public safety, you know, the sheriff's department, our rescue departments, and animal control, always put money into that. I've been there, paid for animal control, but you never know. We may have a wild coon or something coming down. So, and I don't know, five hundred bucks would even cover that, it'd cover a lot cheaper, but. Fire department, first responders, they've been at twenty thousand for four or five years. They seem to do all right with that dollar amount, and then whatever's not spent in those two budgets, goes into their reserve for trucks and usually what it gets done on. Public works, search streets, garbage. We don't really spend a whole lot on the streets, and as a whole, ten thousand remains like the pressures that. The lighting for the streets could come out of the road use tax. It never happens as long as I've been here. I don't know if they were saving that money along the way to, to put towards our expenses. I thought that probably fifteen hundred dollars this year, if mine gets there at least. That'll kick in during this budget year. Snow removal at six thousand three, we haven't spent very much this year at all. The garbage that's on here, that's cleanup day, coverage cleanup day and maybe other, there's something else we need to happen. As much as their fees gone up, which probably will be what it needs to be in next year. Health and social services, the only thing we use that, we do send money to MICA and YSS. MICA gets three hundred and fifty and YSS gets two hundred. We miss Mr. Linsky. I'm making a sure he must have already retired. He came for many years. And mosquitoes is in under that. We haven't sprayed for mosquitoes in thirty years maybe? If we don't get any more rain, we won't do it again this year. Culture and recreation, the library services, we have that contract with the Connet Library. It's set to go up three percent every year, so. Then they're happy to have that dollar. The parks and cemetery, I did raise those a thousand dollars from what I've done, just because everything keeps going up. That covers the mowing and any maintenance on the swing sets or, you know, for the new swings. Cemetery is the mowing we need. Bob used to fix stones, you know, level them back up, but we probably need to find somebody else to do that. If there's more, you know, we can get that cop back up. We missed doing it for a few years and he did some more. And then expense for this building, which would include the heating, the open, general maintenance. General government's kind of whatever's left. Mayor, council, and clerks pay, the attorney. If we had election in the twenty four, I would have at least a thousand dollars in there, but I put that in every other year. And then city hall and buildings, that is a easily payable lot. Another general that kind of just covers everything else. Like the dues expense from one eleven would be under other general, come out of the dues is fun, but it's still in that category. Proprietary water and sewer, water, you know, thirty five thousand, sewer sixteen thousand. Most of the sewer funds that we're collecting is going towards the mown, so. Moral payment seventeen thousand dollars, and we've got enough here, we'll be able to, um. Principal's twelve thousand, I figured we'll have between seventeen and eighteen thousand to put an extra towards it. So that's another whole year.
I have an idea.
It's between two fifty, two hundred fifty and three hundred. So I should get that down. No, that's, it's a big issue. So I'll have that in the may, she can use this in that. So then just a ending balance, you know, expense totals across the board. Like I said, if you're interested in reading, wanting to. So if anybody has any additions, think we could run one for someone else or you can buy something. Or the park, the park is looking at the truck, but who knows, that would be, he did get a bid and it was fifty six thousand dollars. From Union Auto, but yes, that, I mean, the other business. But for something like that, you know, like always amend the budget.
Thank you, Christie. That was great. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Christie.
Any more to look for back there?
No, we'll do an April one. At the, after the April first initial public hearing meeting, then we'll have another meeting and we'll set the public hearing on all of this. So if you go through it and you think, oh, well, really, I'd like to see us spend X amount of dollars on. Just, yeah, something major, and we can still change it at that meeting.
We got a call.
April first, we want a, April twenty second.
Yeah, they're already going first, and they're really, they're all at seven, right?
Number four, discussion on updating the community, might spend some work on this and.
I talked to a painter from outdoor waste, that's tiny, it's very exciting. And the customer not painting the ceilings near the kitchen. After a little field, field hall, it could be your office, too, it could be your office, Christie, so we would mention that tax. And so just all the ceilings, paint the, and the walls. That's for the painting and labor to do. You just paint the white ceilings and then an odd white would be on the walls.
So it's actually still on the wall now?
Yeah, it's in the hall, yeah, something close to it.
But we're talking about rebuilding. It's sound barrier, is it? Sound barrier, is it?
I don't know, we actually missed it back.
Did we budget enough for the community building, one down?
Well, I don't know, it's like you're going to go. Are you doing it this year or are you doing it next year? That's one. Depends on what all the bids are on here. How much do we need right now? See, we have twenty five hundred dollars, comparable to five thousand. So we can amend the budget, because this was the later thought, so.
We've got a gap on the left.
Plus, what I was wondering about.
Schuysman, Mr. Schuysman?
Yeah, there's, there's forty seven hundred sixty G dollars in there, you know, that we can put towards the community building. So, but we, I still have to have this one at the end.
Yeah.
It still has to be in the budget, but anyway.
And I did get some lines, a different, another quote, some lines from Julie from Thompson, interiors of Marshall Town. And it's a, there are different lines in here, she said the fabric, I think she's a little bit, I don't know about this, because you don't know about it, maybe. It's a fabric, I think she said, she said it's a poly, because we asked her how they clean it and stuff. And she said it's a poly, you know, soaked in water, she said you can use it, you can mop it. And this is, it's install price, so we're going to do all the work. There's a morning, we said to take care of the morning. That was some strands we had last month.
They were vinyl.
They were vinyl. And it was a thousand, a thousand, it was a strand, so. This is, we have a six two five.
On the line thing, I just did some look around the line, because I used this site when I was putting some out, pulled out some of my house fibers here. I liked this site, but there's lots of options on here, but I just kind of printed off roughly what we have already. Again, there's options, colors, and so this is obviously you can change, but I. But I measured these, these were about fifty-seven or forty-five, I think, about what I measured on the inside. That was about three hundred and fifty bucks. So again, maybe just another option to look at. There are some really good sites online, dude.
So is that...
No, together install.
No, you just, you got to install these, correct?
Yes, but they're super easy to install. They're literally just brackets on the inside and you have to push them in, basically. So.
Like for more of this stuff, you're telling me to move.
Think they ever hear of Marty on those?
Are those vinyl or...
Yeah, these are vinyl. Of course, like I said, there's lots of options on these. Maybe if I can see it on here. Yeah, of course, I can see that, no. This is the site, I don't, I don't care, it was just another option. I was just trying to look at some other options on it. And there's so many options on there, so it's not like this is the only thing. I just thought, for the price, and it's not like we use a whole lot, but this is, they're good, they're good poly lines.
Yeah, and it just, and then the looks of them, and you expect our community to have a nice, so.
Oh, for sure, these are basically exactly that.
We should prepare for the city, perhaps it's always due.
Absolutely.
The hell? I was just, now, no.
No, no, we're not. No, we have the acoustics.
Acoustics, okay. There you go. Yeah, I don't know what, you know, let me, I...
How bad it is in here, though.
Oh, I agree, I think we definitely need some of you, this, when these meetings go on, it's hard to hear.
Well, we need something on the thing.
Well, and I don't know, I mean, if you look at just doing maybe the ceiling stuff and, and do the site a while later, I don't know, I guess.
Oh, and this does not include...
Holy shit.
No.
So where's this school from?
Strangest.
Strangest.
Section two eighty-nine eighteen of the article encourages cities to join together with other communities and gather the entities when they need some huge purchases.
My God, some huge purchases.
Ah, no.
It's gotta be something.
Holy Jesus.
Sees the panels that you brought the material in there, don't you?
Yeah, I was going to ask, not the...
Not the...
Not the pad.
Not the squishies, though.
Yeah, this was the, that thicker one, do I want each, like, or... A crack was on the wall.
What we, what she brought that day.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think that that, this is probably from the factory that did the ceiling, it was worth a thousand back, or...
The walls is two, but the ceiling is big one.
And I know it's, it's, I mean, here's a lot different one year, like, the old council is not near, because it's, you know, smaller, I suppose, than the, you know, surrounding, or maybe it's just a little...
So she only suggested nine panels in ceiling?
Yeah, I, um, you, you thought more than I...
Darwin, Darwin, remember, we were here when she proposed that.
Well, we're all, sure.
I'm surprised they didn't want it, thought only nine, that's all, just how big it is.
And two by eights?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine two by eights.
Yeah, you don't want to be that together.
Oh, no, I'm just surprised it's not more, that's all.
Yeah.
Like even like fifteen hundred or something, you know? I don't know, I don't know that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, it must just run in between these lights.
Does not include installation.
I don't care if it's... I don't know if it's like...
Darwin, when she was here that day, didn't she generally talk about between the lights?
Yeah.
But you know, that is only for... Yeah, like you went all the way down, everything.
Well, you went all the way down, then you don't even come back, you don't know. Kind of shot, not one of those ways, too. How did she, how did she say they hang those to screw them up or?
They got, that's a bracket.
Brackets like that.
No, yeah, then she said they just, didn't she say they just drove into the ceiling?
Oh, ceiling, yeah, they got, in the ceiling, yeah. Plastic on it, or whatever. Nothing, ceiling.
I called a lot of roads. Started getting twice, back to that, we never responded.
Is there a chance that they have directed with them?
Well, as I talked to them, that, that company that we get them from, the school, that they, they wouldn't come here. I couldn't get them here right now, they'll get it. They want me to measure and make a sense of price, but I would just soon have somebody come in here and look at this and do that, so.
Has anybody in the county of Marshall put up a new community building lately that we might...
Well, the Marshall County High School, adult schools just have some of this sound, you know. Music, look, for the music park, we have their gyms.
They don't, you've got band in there across the street.
Yeah. Where, and they can...
They're looking, that's probably, they've got band in there hanging down.
And I could try to get all of these people in there, because it's just...
There's gotta be somebody else to...
But I would have a feeling they're gonna be hired, it's using string, because this company, that is, you know, you know, this school, the auditorium is for... I just, I mean, I can imagine that, I mean, you might do that, or, or, or worse.
You want to hang them?
No.
Do they want, I mean, they will, I could...
Well, I, too, they go, I just, they, I...
Uh, she didn't talk about it, did she? Because you, you and she talked about that.
What if we bought them ourselves off the line? If we found out we want to mine, what, what would it take to just hire a construction person to come in? And it might feel like it'd be far cheaper for us to buy them ourselves off of inside a line. I just, they've got some handyman that'll come in and put a word in line, we gotta buy them. Mike?
I want my ginger tops.
So, should we table this until another day?
Can I, can I go forward and say, Jimmy?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the city purchasing bidding, and just, just a thought, when everything else about a product, product, and its price is the same, the stake prefers your city spent money on. I didn't know that, maybe this is just...
Spend money.
Spend money in Iowa.
Yeah, it's supposed to say, maybe that's, that's in there.
Well, but we don't want to do the paint, we're gonna paint them, just, I would think building is, needs paint, I mean, it's dark in here and...
I would think you probably want to make the same.
This type of building, we're gonna paint it twice. And we put us, I think.
When the last time was before two thousand, July of two thousand and four.
Don't you think you probably want to wait till paint, just to only get a decision on these? Just because I'm thinking, what's it gonna look like behind there? Like, is there a lot of holes?
Yeah, it's, well...
Yeah, because most of, because most of, because most of the panels are not like this anymore, they have spacing in between them. So I think you're probably gonna end up with some wall repairs before you...
There are nothing, I, there ain't no hole, no, no, no brackets, I'm sure.
So there's some screw holes, too.
I think the wall was over, they, they were solid all the way around.
Yeah.
Those walls over there, you're looking at.
They're solid all the way like this?
It was like, it was like, take his mouth off.
No, 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 I understand that, what I'm saying is most of them are like a four by eight panel and they got a foot in between them. And a foot all between them, that's what I'm saying. So I'm wondering if there's gonna be a wall repair that would be needed before we paint it.
For in between, in between?
That's probably... So that's why I'm curious.
You did four, thirty-six panels, one by eight.
That's why, that's what I'm curious, like, if we would need to repair that before we paint it.
Field acoustics, I sure would be talking to somebody that knew what the hell they were talking about.
Two ways.
Field acoustics, what you're talking about, background noise?
Yeah.
Especially with this dock on concrete floor. Uh, you could throw a whole bunch of money and a whole bunch of stuff and not do anything good.
Well, when I talked to the company from, um, the school, they said, we should put a drop ceiling in here, is what they said. The best thing to do is put a drop ceiling in here.
Yeah.
If you want to add that. I think, I don't know what across, but drop ceiling, but I bet that, I bet that. It's really worth it, it's a place to, you know, sleep. You can, you can, you can, you can, you can.
Huge project. Huge order.
That would be, I don't know, ask a question. Building building.
Should we continue to work on this project?
This isn't something we want done before July.
No. Never, we don't want to rush it.
No, 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 this is, this is a long term, too.
Especially for those prices.
Well, we need work.
She, I think that what we looked at that day that she brought was the same thing there. They put in, uh, Marshalltown Auditorium, Marshalltown High School Auditorium. I don't know, is, is it similar to what you have?
I mean, this, we have this stuff in our, aren't you? This school, this is the same thing that we have in our, they all do the building.
A lot noisy. I guess my last question is, is there anything you're needing?
They don't want your way.
That's right. Size is being, like, is there something we need to talk about, those offices? Quite a big bag.
Talking to the action, that, that, that's fine. And Darwin and I even talked about getting a cabinet, even, I used kitchen cabinet to put underneath the window to hold the maps and install that stuff, I painted it up, but...
So some organization stuff?
Yeah.
So we'll continue to keep working on this as a long term project? Do I agree?
Yes.
Um, Librarian Whiskin, we'll try to have a meeting, if I can get Junior on April one at six P M. before the, uh, budget meeting. That'll kind of hinge on if Junior can come that day. So, is it gonna be a problem with more than three of us from the council are at that meeting? That, because it is, quote, if our three for the, for the...
No, it's three, three is four.
Yes.
So, does it have to be two or less?
Yes. From the council.
For Librarian Whiskin, why, meeting?
Just a meeting.
Why, yeah.
Yes.
Have you had anybody to talk to on that?
No. I've got tons of volunteers, I've got a whole page of volunteers.
Yay!
They're just wanting to do what you're telling them.
They'll do what they always do. So we'll, let me talk to Junior, we'll see about April one. Uh, siren project. Here's what we know about the siren project. The first week of April, they will get the sirens into the county. And then they're gonna go around and make sure the markings and the flagger are okay. And then once all the locates are done, it's approximately two weeks for install. And the goal is to have the poles and the sirens installed before May.
Before May.
Wow.
Now we need to have the electrical work done, have it looked at, so we need to decide whether to have, um, what they give them. I have an email that has the specs, so I, this will need, so.
So do we need a motion to have, for instance, Hawkins come?
Yeah.
Do we need to bail out, or do we choose somebody?
I just choose somebody, because it's not gonna be fifty thousand dollars.
At Hawkins, you have, this is not a, fifty thousand.
Who do you like to work with?
Hawkins has definitely...
That's who you like to work with?
Well, I had to work on there, and then ready to, 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 we get that, and have your boy there. Got a problem with it. And it'll work as well.
Is there a motion to have Hawkins come do the electrical work?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Joel Cole, Craig?
Yeah.
Bam, yes, Mike, Devon?
Yes.
Christie, go ahead, contact him. Okay, um, this no parking sign at the Uptown Park. There has been some concerns voiced from parents about people parking in front of the no parking sign. And you probably already noticed, it's two to four parents who do not live in town that continuously park in front of the no parking sign every day.
Well, but I heard that, did you read?
Well, and then, apparently, I, I can't speak to this, this is only what I've been told. They park in front of buses then, too?
No.
Oh, okay. So, they, this is the concerns I've had, that the sheriff is here, but does nothing.
Surprise!
He may not.
Surprise!
That's what I, that's what I was gonna contact, um, Sheriff Phillips and ask him if they would tick it up maybe a couple times and we'd get this accomplished.
Kid, can just, is Darwin, can you help us doing it? Can we get license plates?
Why do you still have to play?
Do they have to give them license plates and then we know?
Is it, and it's apparently people, it's not the Whiskin people.
Well, the Whiskin people, I don't know, no, it's...
There's, the, can, comments that I've had said it's not the Whiskin moms, it's the out of town people.
Yeah.
All right, I'll contact Joel Phillips and we'll see if we can get this on. All right, any other old business?
We've got new, um, door business now.
I have a new reservation.
New business. Seasonal, uh, maintenance for lawn mowing.
What?
Discussion on hiring seasonal maintenance for lawn.
Oh, yeah. I mean, all we need.
Do you have somebody in mind?
Yeah.
I'll have to put an ad out, I'd like for the person to go through an interview, just so they get the practice of doing that. Is it a high school student?
Huh?
High school student?
He died earlier.
Okay. So, so Christie, we'll go ahead and get that ad out.
Okay.
Has a plan to meet with them?
Yeah, we got, we got some bad news.
Is there any more on that? Uh, discussion on, um, setting a citywide cleanup day. Is it usually late? Eight, early May?
Well, I think, I don't think we do, but we moved it up to the last weekend in May, or April last year, did we? We moved it in April last year.
Do you want to have a citywide cleanup day?
Absolutely.
You go off your own, first you go, you've already been there. You've done a lot for the garden, you had a prior...
You're always gonna have that garden, it's, it's, it's just, it's gonna happen, but you have a lot of people that...
Don't want my garden.
Don't, don't take advantage of it.
Is anyone, anybody want to propose a date?
Usually, yeah.
Well, last year, we went to...
What do we have, Thursday, Friday?
Saturday. Thursday, Friday, Sunday. So they came and got the dumpsters on Monday morning.
Do, my, the Thursday. I think I remember, I think it used to be this one, I think, last year.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Still break the wall, we could still have blizzards in it.
Was, did it used to be Mother's Day?
It used to be Mother's Day weekend, it was always Mother's Day.
You want to do a Mother's Day weekend, again?
What's your name, Mother's Day is the twelfth, why don't we do it the next weekend?
With dates that.
Graduation.
That's graduation weekend.
That's just really shitty.
About the first weekend.
That's going to say.
Maybe the third, the fourth.
Third, fourth, fifth?
The seventh, the eighth.
Oh, second.
Second, the fourth.
Are we agreeable on that? May second, third, fourth, do we have a motion to have citywide cleanup day, May two, three, four?
You'll have to do. It'll have to do.
Are you making motions a lot?
Are you making this motion?
Mine will, can't it then?
The third, second.
Second.
Ted, roll call vote, Craig.
Yeah.
Ted. Mike.
Yeah.
Ben.
Yes.
All right, citywide cleanup day, May second, third, and fourth. Resolution twenty-four dash oh-three, right on utility counts, Christie?
I had one that was a dollar, twenty-six left after your deposit was used, just want to write that out. And then the house, there was no armor there, actually, it took out there because it was five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, two hundred, it was late fees and reconnection fees, so actual water, that's about three hundred and sixty-seven, but. Yeah, it's on the back.
Oh, sorry.
Is there a motion to accept resolution twenty-four dash oh-three utility right now? Pam, is there a second? Devin, roll call vote, Craig?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yeah.
Mike? Ben? Seven. Okay. Ambulance service meeting, the first responders, and, uh, Jordan, Junior, Wendy, and I went to a Unity Point meeting to talk about the future of the EMS service in Marshall County. It was a very interesting meeting, lots of, uh, issues on the table, nothing was decided at this point in time, except how the communities might work together, I think they're going to form a steering committee to continue to talk about this. Unity Point led the meeting, but as I understand it, they want the communities to somewhat take the lead and maybe develop a plan of some sort that could be brought back to each individual community, it's very elusive, this one, so. All right, uh, get a report from Ben?
Just that you had.
Any report from Junior? Streets and alleys? Any report on that? Parks, Danny?
Uh, yeah, um, we had one more check coming to the park, it's a hundred dollars. One more payment, uh, the equipment is in, I know it's from the newsletter, but the equipment's in, and we don't have it installed here, right? Okay, that's still here, and then I will be working on the trees, per, tree purchase here soon, that we approved in my last one. It's about that time.
Thank you, general utilities. Okay, and Mike, give your very expensive report.
It looks like the U C just up a couple thousand, wants to be a later. Sure, no, one more. Usually eleven or twelve.
We have a lot of houses over here, they don't think I'm a bar, they're not afraid of it, and another house, they're usually too wide, I, she does too.
Oh. And there was a water break in there, I mean, somebody's individual service, didn't you have a break?
About her head, that was a break. So even the water.
Although that looks like everything is about the same.
When you asked about the nuisance officer situation, the mayor's met a month or so ago and discussed the possibilities of the nuisance officer, no conclusions were decided at all. So, nothing at this point to. Are there any other unanswered residence concerns? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Oh, favor, say aye.
Aye.